I'm meeting in order and I'll turn it over to Robert.
The first item is the annual renewal of the health spring insurance retirees and their spouses. As the sheets that I have provided you, I've highlighted the ones in front of me tonight. The premium for an individual under that plan this last year or the year where he had is about $110. The rate increase is one to 169, which is a 52% rate increase. And currently the retiree pays $40. There are some changes and Rick with THW brought this to our attention and we're going to propose that to you tonight. And Rick, if you want to talk to them about the changes and any other part, answering questions about coverage, we'll come back and then talk about what we're recommending to you.
Well, the retirees that are over 65 are moved to an advantage plan. And when we compare that with our health insurance cost, that's a considerable savings for us for us move to advantage plan. So the individual cost on health insurance, that's $619 for an individual and $1,287 for retiree and spouse. So the using the Medicare Advantage Plan, the cost of $110.74, $221.48 for the retiree and spouse is certainly an advantage for us. We currently have 46, my record shows that we have 46 of at that total cost and the city and the retirees are just some $61,000 annually. Our renewal, which was substantial, would take that cost up to $93,000 for the city and the retirees. Now, as Robert pointed out, the retirees do pay some portion of that, so not all of that is the city cost, but a considerable amount. Making some small changes in this would help consider that instead of the $93,000, we'd see that drop to some $77,000. And the changes would be to increase the drug card copays. It's currently 515.30 and we would move that to a 10, 20, 35. And then we might take note that the current health insurance now, health insurance product, our copays are 10, 20, 45. So somewhat mirrors that now with the change. We have some duplication in our coverages in the fact that retirees are offered the Blue Cross Blue Shield Vision Plan here through the city. And they also have some vision that's built in with this, with the health spring project. So we would look at removing that so that there is not any duplication. And then there's a foreign travel benefit so that if someone travels outside of the United States, got sick, they would help to get them back to the United States if we moved. And that, those policies, if you've got one or two retirees that would go off to somewhere like that, there's policies out there that would be available to them if they wanted to do that. But when we remove those three things or change those three things, then our cost would be $77,682 down from the $93,000. The little sheet that I've given here, we went to, we went to Blue Cross to see if they would help us with this. And you can see that they weren't any help. They were much higher than our renewal with the same health spring. So they did, they did say they would match the plan that we've got at 303 and a quarter, but our renewal was $169.13. So not much help there.
The vision that you're taking out, that is basically a duplication.
Yes, if someone would like to have the Blue Cross vision, they have that opportunity.
The sheet that I gave you just shows the individual numbers, but again, you're going from 110 to 169. If you remove those three items, it gets it at 140. It's still a 30% rate increase even with the 140, which is pretty substantial. In this, we're also recommending to you that we move to a percentage for the retiree pay portion. And that's on the sheet as well, and that would be 33%. This year they paid 36%, so that actually would go down a few percent, but it's going to be on a higher number. Would be 33% for the retiree and that would make it $47 instead of the 40 for them to pay. And then for the spouse, we've recommended 45%, which is with the spouse and the retiree together, that would be 130 versus the 115 that they're paying, so it would be $15 a Let me say this, in the broad picture of things, this is a critical issue, I believe, for the city. You should get in for that tonight. I'm just giving you a heads up that we will ask you to come back for a work session and let's take a look at the whole entire picture. Because with health insurance premiums having done what they've done over the last 15 years, most cities have made some adjustments on the benefits. And so we do have some numbers to bring to you and some recommendations to bring to you and take a look at it. The city has not been putting money into a sinking fund to pay for future retirees. And so that unfunded liability has picked up substantially. And so we want to come back and address that with you in a few weeks in a separate work session. This tonight is for the 2015 renewal only, which is effective January 1. So this is for 2015, not to deal with the whole big concept of what type of retirement benefits for, as far as health insurance can the city afford. Are there any questions on that?
Go back through again a little time on the vision part as what they have on, what we end up with.
Well, our point is that they, that there was vision in this with the health spring, but we are also offering that through the Blue Cross product. So to have that, something that everybody, that we're paying for, for everybody, and then if they, those who elect it, could elect it out of that Blue Cross, it just makes more sense to me.
But you're basically pulling that out and then if they want it, it's an option they have to pay for.
Yes, yes. Now, the big, the big end of this, I might tell you that the big end of the savings is off the drug cards, not off the vision or the foreign travel. The big end is off the drug card, some $24 about, you know, about $4 and 30 cents for the vision or the foreign travel savings. So the vision's about $5.
The vision says, I would say about $2.
About $2.80.
$2.80 or $2 something.
And that's what, is that what we save or if they had to pay?
No, that's what.
We would save.
We would pay tax.
What, what we're going, just on average for retiree, what would they're costing if they took the option?
$3.40, I think, is the cost of that.
I did not bring it for you tonight. We're in the process, we've done some polling with other cities to see. The auditors, the GASP has started in about 2005, requiring cities in their audit to put the dollar amount that's unfunded, what they, what they call their unfunded liability that cities are going to owe at some point, but don't have the money to set. And that's what we want to come and sit down and talk to you about. But those levendons is about, is well over $60 million. And so most cities, when that number started in 2005, to come out, again, to make some substantial changes in what they do. And I will tell you, compared to a lot of the others, this is still very little to pay anything on your spouses and to pay as much as we do on retirees.
If y'all will look on that, on this little sheet here down there, hold it on the left hand side, change the 515.30.30, that's $24.60. And then the removal of foreign travel and the vision is $3.80. I think the vision was the $240 and the remainder of that was the foreign travel.
Any other questions?
Basically, what I'm looking at, because you're probably looking for on the retirees' end, around $10 a month if they raise the higher bill that you're looking at here.
It's coupled, they'll move from 115 to 130.
Well, they're going to pay on a single person, they would pay between the 33% of the 47.69, you got 769, then you pay the extra, if you want the vision, so you're roughly about $10 a month out of their pocket, plus whatever the difference in the copays on the drugs.
That's correct. One of the things we have to do going forward is, you've heard me say before, we've done a good job communicating. We've got to communicate with our workforce because this is just the start. I mean, we've got a $16 million unfunded mandate in the city. I mean, this is just the start. We're looking, didn't we have a discussion where just what our increase would be over the next 36 to 48 months? We would have had, I think, raised property taxes around 50 cents just to cover what our gap was going to be for insurance.
We'll give you those numbers when we meet again, but we're looking at three and a half years of the whole $1 million we used, the expense to the general fund just to cover. And that's a 10% increase, that's based on 10%. And by making these changes, we're getting it down to 30. So that just tells you how conservative that million dollars is estimated.
But I also think as we, through this, we need to engage the workforce. And we have some meetings where the employees get the opportunity to talk and not just us, so we can get some feedback and we might find some ideas and we may find some, if we find a consistency in what's important to the workforce, then maybe we put our dollars in a certain area where we think, see things that aren't as important. But we've got to engage them through this process. We're just getting started on that $16 million unfunded mandate.
All right. Thank you.
Jeff, my next item, let's talk about the solar energy contract with your source partners. Jeff, Ron, you want to?
That's Ron Murrow, I think, landowner gentleman, remember Ron, our plug work committee member there. Ron is with the company, here's your source partner, I have a couple bullets here, I think y'all sent your baby there, please, without having enough. Everybody get one? I'm going to give you an idea of what's in this agreement with Ron and the company in the process of the solar project, now the Washington plan, Long Hartman Drive there. Successfully already have a project in Franklin, I've been down at Biscayne, Ron and I have been in the range for a few of them. Want to give Billy credit too, Billy's got to stay here tonight. Billy's got to put, put me and Ron together, so I'm going to give Billy credit for setting that, getting it started. But certainly Franklin's already doing this. See the King, see if you got your little paper that comes out, the Kansas City Paper, mine faces in, King's have made a paper there last week with the project intention. Second one up there too, we get the site on top of the U. Convention Center downtown Nashville, the guitar on top is his solar project. So just want to not, that Ron, you get some of the key points of the perfect agreement and you've looked over it and felt tense from the legal side of things, but same contract city of Franklin has with the same company. But with that being said, Ron, you want to give us a short overview of a thick document in the package tonight, I guess.
Thank you, I appreciate it. You know, the talking points are exactly what I would tell you tonight. We'll build it entirely by ourselves, not even the financial consideration of city for the solar families and that sort of thing. All the electricity that we produce, the solar panels produce electricity. All of that electricity is going to go to the grid at this moment, that's what's important to do. And TBA is going to value the things it is. We've made the city a contract offer for 20 years to do that, preliminarily accepted it, and I think there's another piece later on once we work our piece out. So for 20 years, electricity, if, what I need to do is recoup my investment. And during the period of time when I'm recouping that investment, I will get 90% of the money from TBA, y'all will get a check from TBA, you'll keep 10%, send me 90%, and that amount spelled out in the contract. Once said investments recouped, it should take about seven and a half years, we figure out. Then the split changes and the city eleven gets 80% and we would get 20%. And we would operate it, maintain it, we'd still own it for the balance of the 20-year contract. At the end of the contract, three things basically can happen. One is, is we can just extend the contract as long as you want to do it, as long as we all agree to it. Number two, you can buy it out at that point in time. Or number three, you can just tell me to take it, I appreciate it. We had all the solar systems, you know, for whatever reason at that time. There are also, there's some bio provisions in contract along with, before I borrow money to do it, because I'm going to have to borrow some of the funds to do it. And so there's a six-month window up front before I get started where you can say, yeah, Mr. Knowles will build it, we would buy it once you build it, commissioning the TBA and this is probably set for that. And that's, and then the next window of opportunity can come until five years later because of the investment tax credit that I will take. If you don't buy it initially, I'll buy it expecting to get a tax credit. And IRS says I have to hold it for five years before, or otherwise a clawback amount of that tax credit for, for that system. So that's real straightforward. I believe it was sold to the city about $3 million. That's what the plan goes to China, Brian. I brought, I don't have it with me tonight, but a meeting I had here with Jeff and some of the other city officials, want to build in Franklin and show them what that project is doing. And it's, you know, it speaks for itself, so I think the $3 million is a real, it's real world.
Franken's, I think, is one-fifth, the original Franken's one-fifth of this one, I believe.
And so that's it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to do it. I've been on top of the new center now for a couple years, power net and power in Franklin, power in Kingston, I'm on four HSA hospitals, you know, over 50 projects statewide, bring it way up every office building they got in St. Tennessee, you know, those people, I'm on top of them, six of their parking complexes, lots of other businesses. Cliff Everly, Oakley, if you ever go buy his shot, can't see it from the road, you have to go backside a little bit, Cliff makes, I want to take the Cliff making money. So there you go, thank you. I'll answer any questions.
After the, after the 20-year term, if the city so chose to renew your contract, whether the city still be getting the 25, $25 a month or?
Maybe 20, yeah.
And even at that, I mean, does it still roll on with you and the maintenance and the other?
We'll do, we'll continue to do the maintenance, because we own it, we'll operate it, maintain it. It's in our best interest to keep that thing really running well, most of the revenue. So that's, that's not in city for 20 years, we're out there for.
There's another opportunity here, and I think this might be the last year, you said, with TBA to apply. So I asked you to go and make an application similar to what we've already done and see if they'll accept it. And if they do, then we can do this a second time.
And Mayor, if I may, I talked to TBA since the meeting about that and the lady there who oversees this program, and what she told me is, is that Lebanon is eligible for another megawatt project. And last year you weren't. I didn't say anything to you all a year ago, November 25th, I have a meeting, saw my notes, because at that time you were limited to one megawatt, and that's size of the project. This year they extended that or expanded to two megawatts. And Mayor, what you don't know is, what I was going to tell you tonight, is that we can do another megawatt, it just can't get the same size.
Yeah.
You've got to move, it's got to be somewhere else. City, City Lebanon can run up to two megawatts now in the program, but they can't get the same size on the same year.
We got size, we got size.
So you pick the size, and I need to know that before the end of year, Phil.
All right. Other questions?
Go back, we'll do it here. We're taking Fisher Park, just sitting there now.
We're going to lease him to the land, he's a leader of the lease, but nine, 10, timber stand turned the first seven, eight, eight years, and 8% return everything. And I have Franklin's bill right here, and like I say, I just put it back up there, but they're one-fifth of ours, it's pretty solid energy, and they received that at just 5434, and that was a month of September, this is September 19th due date, so just answer to bill. So we were five times, that you spent about $25,000, so timber stand then I was 200. I'm thinking I noticed that. That's a medium, you know, then obviously in seven, eight years, hopefully $25,000 coming out, or $20,000 coming out later. And right now, we do plant something back to TBA, just if you could at some point in time, turn on you that you own, that you own plant. You'd like to put them in an area where you have a high need, in case you say you want to turn it back into your own operation. At this point, it's our, our business to set it back to TBA.
Also, listen, is John, did you own the phone, my man? Is this, will you be in general phone, when?
No. Oh, when it comes to us?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. You would, the lease, probably have to push my phone. You turn it back into what our plant is going to be discussing, but right now, we might not need your phone.
Idea was to keep it in general phone. All right. All right, thank you. Thanks for having a work session with me. I've got each of you, either individually or in advertised meetings about this. You know, if there's any questions, you know, let me know at any time and I'll answer it. Hopefully we have a little bit of a basic knowledge of what's going on. The main thing that I want to do today is answer questions, any concerns, go into detail, whatever we need to go into. Then the main thing that I want to accomplish is go over comments that have come in and how we, version of this zoning code update that the planning commission has recommended. Now, there's been some comments that have needed to be addressed in that time. We've had a 15-day, actually a 17-day comment period that ended yesterday, so we collected comments, over almost 30 comments in that time. Some of them needed to be addressed, some of them were just comments that were made. So I'm going to go over in detail so that you know exactly what's changing from the version that you have been sent so far, if that's agreeable to everybody. I did want to run over some, some background on this. I do have the consultants from Parsons Brinkerhoff who have been working on this since 2007. So I've got some background knowledge that beyond what I know about this project, if we need to go back that far. I'll just start off with a, just a brief overview of the lighting commission. Yeah, we do have planning commissioners, board of zoning appeal, members here, we've got some local citizens, I don't see any. This started in 2007, and I don't know the whole history about that, but at some point it was stopped, it was brought to the, to the city council and never got any further. I got here in 2012, and I didn't pick this up for about nine months because I didn't want to jump into something without knowing the city of Lebanon well enough to move forward. We've been working on this for about a year, really picked up the pace about six months ago. I've had over 20 advertised meetings with the planning commission zoning code update committee. We presented this and are still waiting on comments from public works committee and the board of zoning appeals. The board of zoning appeals would have commented yesterday, but the meeting, we didn't have a forum, so the meeting's been moved. I expect public works commission to comment on it on Monday. We've had monthly developer meetings since August, and they have been given an opportunity to comment on this. We've reached out section by section in the spring to developers, engineers, architects, surveyors to comment on this. Each section, we do a section each week so that there would be time for everybody to comment on this. Had two public meetings in the comment period, we've had 17-day comment period that was advertised to every media outlet that we know of, press release was sent out. This has been posted on the website for 15, that was 17 days. And that's just a brief, that's the public input that we've been seeking and been trying to bring into this process. So we have it going out and getting input as best we can.
Above or some of the, over some of the developers' comments, overall comments?
Well, when, when we started looking at this, there were two ways we could go. We could try to get the whole zoning code that we have now, just address every single issue and just work on that. Or we could go back and do just the minimal changes. We chose to do the minimal changes and you can expect in the future, our bucket list of changes that need to be voted on individually may be coming up, you know, as we, as the city council sees as a priority. The, the comments that were great, a lot of them had to do a site plan, site review. The, the comments that were great, a lot of them had to do a site plan, site review, just changes that needed to be made, kind of detailed things. We ended up, we were thinking about doing, redoing the whole landscape ordinance requirements. We ended up, just based on comments from developers and, and engineers, architects, just backing off on that because we would have, we got to the point where we would have had to hire the urban forester to get it done. What we did end up doing, we're keeping, we're adding a requirement to put street trees into, or parking lot trees, shade trees and parking lots. We're going to keep that, but we're mostly going to address landscaping at a different time. A lot of those comments just got integrated into the code, so I'm trying to think of in detail. But it was about six months ago that those came up. We've had some developers still getting us comments, and they're in our comment list that I have here. Are there any questions about that part of it? Anything else I need to go over?
So you backed off the landscaping portion right now?
Yeah, we, we considered completely changing the landscape requirements in the city and the site plan requirements. That was just going to be an overwhelming task to accomplish. It would have put this back probably a year if we were to do that. So we went back with pretty much the language of what best we could that we have right now for those, for those sections. We did, as far as site plan requirements, the street trees is a big thing that we add, or the, the parking lot trees is a big thing we are adding. We are also, the apartment complex regulations are not defined in our codes what an apartment complex is. Those have come out, there's some confusion. That will need to be addressed at some point, how we handle that.
And you said parking lot trees?
Park trees, tree department, I should have said.
I don't know where you were at, at the time. Down there, we had a bunch of trees down there by Crook.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, great big tree. And it always come in there one day and cut every damn one of them off.
I remember that. Everybody from Ace Kane about it. Before you do street trees, get real familiar with the cutting practices of trees and the power lines right here.
We have changed the list of recommended trees. We've got a list in one of the, in the appendices, trees that we don't want, shrubs that we don't want. We've gone through that and upgraded that quite a bit. We've gotten quite a bit of input on that. We've had some people from Cumberland University that helped out and gave us some spelling corrections on the map and different things beyond what I know.
When we come out of this, do you think, or whether we deal with sidewalks is going to make sense?
Well, right, we've already addressed that here, and if we want to change it, we can, but...
Or currently, I mean...
Yeah, currently, the way sidewalks work...
It's all good, we don't, because this, you know, the thing I want to do is, I think it's important as we're going through this process, to make a clear statement that we're, that we're good to go, but I haven't heard anything in so long, so I just want to make sure. Because that was the biggest thing that I used to get, and it's still the biggest complaint I have with, with my constituents, is who's responsible for my sidewalk, and how do you fix my sidewalk? And they just have this expectation that every sidewalk in the city is going to be maintained and repaired and fixed by us. And they, a lot of people have this impression that when a builder builds something, if they don't build a sidewalk in front of them, I've heard a lot of people say, well, what about the sidewalk fund? And they think money's going into a fund, and that we have this pot of money that we're going to eventually repair all their sidewalks with, and that's...
We do have a sidewalk fund, it's not a huge sidewalk fund, I mean, I'll let you. But as development happens, we have raised every parcel in the city based on how close it is to communities that would need sidewalk access, and there's nine of those criteria. You can get a total of eighteen points. The highest one in the city is thirteen, but, so we have a map that shows where the sidewalk cars are. We use that as a basis, not as the absolute standard. But if we don't see that there's a connection to a sidewalk, that there's anything for the sidewalk to go to, and we can use that money somewhere else better, and we don't have to maintain it somewhere else, that doesn't need it, we're going to recommend at the planning commission level that they don't put in sidewalks that didn't say that we're paying them a rule, and that is going to, it's not very big right now, there's not a whole lot we can do with it, but...
Well, as we're going through this process, if you could just maybe give, just a one-page handout that I could use, or the other council members could use for sidewalks. When people hear that we're changing zoning, to me, that's, that's ninety-five percent of the question from the average citizen is, how does it relate? What is the zoning going to do for me getting a new sidewalk? And if we could just hand them something that says, here's, here's the responsibility of the sidewalk for the city, here's the responsibility, here's what we do, I think that that would help me at least, relieve a lot of questions. Like I said, I can't speak for you guys, but that's been my question.
Yeah.
What's, what are these changes going to do to get me a new sidewalk?
Okay. And, and to be clear, this zoning code is going to keep what we have, but we did change it within the last two years, about a year ago, that we changed it and done it. And then there's some things that you're asking that are beyond the zoning code, but I think we could get that document together, kind of a frequently asked question about sidewalks.
Don't be angry.
Type of question.
Thank you.
I'm going to move forward with this, and I'm trying to do this as simple as I can, and this is a really complicated document, so I am going to do the best I can with that. And this is, I can't say this is going to be the most exciting document, but a lot of these comments, we've gone over as we've met, and have added more as they've come in. And I just want to do this in the most systematic way I possibly can. Like I said, it's not going to be terribly exciting, but there's some comments that we're actually changing, or recommending changes to, staff is recommending, and the update committee is recommending changes. Basically, planning commission has recommended this document, these are things that have come up since the planning commission meeting. So we tried to address as much as we could before then, but there's some things that, and you can imagine this complicated of a document, there's going to be things. So number one, remove parking requirements for boats and campers in residential priority areas, chapter eight, page eight, seven. So that's the first thing on this document, the first page. And what we're going to do is we're going to go from one through these, and each page is going to be a new change. I decided not to print out a whole new code because this wasn't finalized yet. I've only got the pages that I've changed stuff on. So the page numbers are going to be how they would work in the zoning code, the full document.
So you're saying these changes are already reflected in here?
They're not reflected in here, they're reflected in here.
So what's, we can take this page and plug it in to what we've done.
Exactly. You can take this page, plug it into what you've got, and you should have pretty much the document that we're looking for. Now, if, if I am making a change or suggesting a change that we don't like, we don't have to do it. It's, we're just trying to address the comments. So in relationship to number one, I've taken out the section about whether you can park your vehicle in the front. The idea is that we think maybe this is a better bucket list thing, not necessarily it's a bad idea, just that this may not be the time to deal with that. This, this section that I've taken out came to us from the two thousand and seven version of this, it was of the code. We do not have this requirement now, and that's why we're considering taking it out to stay with the status quo. But we do, we are keeping the language of not, not leaving in a camper on your parking. So...
Doesn't, doesn't it make sense for them to not be allowed to park or store in their front yard?
We can, we can, I can ignore this if you want me to, but we can either handle it on the bucket list and just pick it up on another day, or we can just leave it, we can leave it in there. And I don't have a problem either way with the comment.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I don't want, you know, the USS Minnow parked in somebody's front yard.
I can't think of that Clark Griswold movie. I mean, I've got those relatives, they won't ever leave. I, I think we should ignore them. I mean, because it makes sense, it's just saying you can't park it in their front yard.
Right.
Well, it would depend, you'd probably break it down, you know, like, like a lot of guys have bass boats, you know, they're not that big.
You're going, I think you go over any global, like, what you're saying, I think you go over into this, some smaller...
Yeah, because I have a boat, I have a little fifteen-foot boat, which I got in my kind of back. But I'm just saying, I used to, when I fish a lot, I parked right beside my couple, like, you get two of the same. We probably can break that down on size of boats.
So let's, let's leave it in and just put that on the bucket list.
You know, a lot, a lot of homeowners, that's what we was discussing the other day, a lot of homeowners associations have this in, not to do with... I think we're going to have a few of the smaller areas where it might be. I just, I got some areas where if they don't put it up close to the front door, it'd be gone in the morning.
Let me just, the reason, one of the things that I try to do, when I do this stuff, is think about the other side. What if we, what if we do this, what if we don't do this? So obviously, if we, we leave this in, then nobody's parking their, their boats in the front, nobody's parking RVs in the front, and that's good. But the other thing that happens is, we're starting to, we're learning to lose some commercial and industrial areas to more storage facility units that, that really, you know, they're not going to employ anybody, that's going to be storage areas, but they're going to go into land that can be used for other things. The other thing that goes against is the enforcement of this. And that's probably the biggest reason why I'm leaning, I was leaning towards not putting it in right now, is we would start to be the enforcement mechanism. The way this would get enforced, if we put it in the code, is, and this is, I'm not the expert, but this is kind of how it would work. They would have it in there for more than twenty-four hours, because that's what we say. We'd give them a letter saying, you have so much time to move it. They'll move it, they'll put it back, we'll send them another letter, tell them to move it, they'll move it, they'll put it back. I mean, the enforcement of that criteria is something to think about.
And what about the campus? You've got the same situation on that, you know, some of them got these, these big buses. You know, some places got a little park right beside the house, and then you've got these smaller campuses, you know, I don't know what they're called, but that's something that we probably have to break down if we don't...
And it's really, yeah, it's really hard to find that one.
I hear what you're saying, but the one thing I don't ever want to, I don't ever want to send a message that because enforcement may not be easy, we're not going to enforce. Hell, if that's the case, we might as well take down the speed limit signs, because it's pretty hard to enforce.
Right, that's true.
It's our job to enforce it to the best of our ability if it's in there, and I don't think the enforcement piece should ever fall. You enforce it, it's the city policy, you expect the people to do this thing, and I don't think it's unrealistic, but, but who's the expert? I mean, if it, you know, you're the expert. I mean, I want to go with what you do, but it just seems like common sense. Put it in front of your yard.
Wait, I mean, Rob, I mean, the whole idea...
Tell them, please.
The whole idea, we've got a lot of stuff in the zoning code that is archaic. We're just trying to clean up the embarrassing parts. Any one of these little items could shut down the whole process, and we were trying to just pick them out, wait till later, and deal with each one of these. Boats, campers, there's a, you've seen the bucket list, there's a ton of these things. We're just trying to get the code cleaned up, and then we'll come back and deal with these specific things.
So these being things pulled out are recommendations from planning and not based on a comment from a citizen? Because I was under, understanding we were talking about it because you received the comments. I guess I totally misunderstood.
It's a combination of the two.
Yeah, what else? Let me, let me address that. These are comments from citizens. When we see a comment like this and we realize that there's some disagreement on the commission and that there's some disagreement about whether it should be in there, our default is go back to the status quo where it is now, because nobody's asking for, nobody's asked us to put this in there, it's just in there right now. And then put it on the bucket list and deal with it later.
Is that bucket list, I know we went over that a little bit. I'm sorry, I put that next to my spot. Because my, my mistake, and that's my mistake, I just figured a citizen sent this thing in, and then we're pulling out because I did it, and because of this specific thing. I keep seeing, I keep seeing Randy Quays head it out there with his hat.
I was part of the meeting as outsiders, you know, non-officials. There were several of us, engineers and other people. What we were trying to do on our part was not getting anything controversial, okay? And make it clean, and what, what was proposed was things that are not controversial, but just over the years, it's got layered and layered and layered, and the things added doesn't subtract it. We're just trying to clean up the things that ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of the people care less, it just needs to be cleaned up, and pull the controversial stuff off, be looked at later.
Okay, so if it's, if it's pulled out of here, you guys have already seen it, and you guys are okay with it?
It's going right back to the status quo.
You may change it later, but nobody's suggesting changes now, just the stuff that is antiquated, that for years has been later, that nobody's ever looked at, we just, they asked us to look at it, the easy stuff, clean a lot of mess up.
Okay, I appreciate it, thanks. Just, I hope we understand now, I'm going to track it.
And we really want to try to make this happen, put a year's worth of work in this, and we don't want some detail that's very legitimate to derail the whole process.
I'm going to move on to number two.
I'm good now, I'm good now.
And I was just going to say, that one's going on the bucket list, that's going to be an item we're going to...
And his bucket list is something that may be controversial, but we can take one at a time later.
You guys can give us a priority on that bucket list.
Yeah.
Which are the things that we want to work on first? We have no agenda, we're just trying to get the archaic language out of the zoning code. You tell us the things that you want us to change.
Got you.
Moving on to bucket list, number one. Number two is, there's just two images in our historic district guidelines, this was just the version that was approved by the planning commission as, as the attachment to the end of this document. This is really just cleaning up a screening area. So F-ten and F-eleven, it's just the image, it just wasn't done before, it is now, so we just wanted to put the image in there. So we're just fixing that one. Number three, the table on eight fifteen. Our, our standard for parking spaces is, is a hundred and eight inches instead of ninety-six inches, and so we just, we just wanted to change that to be consistent with our code. The next page is an illustration, same adjustment, we're going where it says a hundred and eight, the original version had a hun, it had ninety-six, we're just changing that. That's just a simple fix. And that addresses comments three and four. Gravel is a, is an issue that has come up, whether we can require new parking lots to be gravelled, to behave, is not an issue, but existing parking lots become an issue. We were going to address this in more detail, and we have, we're going back to the language that I was in the code in the two thousand and seven version. I keep replaying the two thousand and seven, I don't know what year it was actually, it was last edited before I got here, but it started in two thousand and seven. So we're just going back to the language that was in the two thousand and seven version. We were trying to clean up some stuff, but we think that, that on eight thirty, the gravel issue is just something that we was going to bucket list, we don't worry about it right now. So the idea was to just fix that. On page eight thirty-eight, item number two at the top is highlighted, and actually, I'm just seeing, item, page, item number three also needs to be changed, but it'll be a duplicate, it should be a duplicate of... item number three also needs to be changed, but it'll be a duplicate, it should be a duplicate of what's on two. The idea is that it needs to include three, three over one, it can't, you can see it's supposed to be three over one and gray here. So we're just going to change that to include three over one, or three to one, so, three to one, so. And that, we'll do that on both two and three, so we'll make a net to fix item three as well. And then the landscape requirement for single-family and duplex, we had some comments about that, and how that would work. The easiest thing right now to do is just to pull it out and consider that as a bucket list item, whether we're going to require certain landscaping on new single-family and duplex developments. And that's not highlighted, but I've got it crossed out there, and that's on the same page. Item eight is an item that is going to get addressed in the map, I'm going to come back to that. But basically, this involves Tex Ward, the areas north of Hickory Ridge Road and Tex Ward that are, that are shown on the original map as RR. We're going to go to RS20, they're less than three acres, so they're, they're going to fit a little bit better in the RS20. So that's something that, that should address item eight and item nine. There is an issue with the 50-foot setback versus 75, and 50 feet is a pretty large setback. And we can, we can go back to 75, I'm going to say, leave it at 50, but that's, the map will take care of item nine. Ten, the figures on ten were just unclear because the asterisks were, the legend for it was on a different page than the rest of the document. So we've redone this whole image, this whole graphic, to just make it clear that what the asterisks were meant for. We've actually labeled everything instead of having the asterisks there. So that's, that's cleaning that up to make it easier to use. The original version, you'd never know what it meant. Mini storage, this goes to appendix C. We have it listed, we had it listed as general personal service, we think it works better in transport and warehousing. By doing that, it limits it to the industrial areas, which is what we have now, and a commercial district. And in addition to changing appendix C, we're also changing appendix B to switch it from the commercial service area to a conditional use in the general, the commercial general area for transport and warehousing. That makes more sense, it's more keeping with the status quo, so that's what appendix B two changes. There's just two tables with that. Okay. We really get back at 12, we start to get into repeats of comments that have been made before, and then some other comments that don't really need to be addressed. 13 is what I talked about, and also addresses item nine, so that's the same thing. We've already gone over gravel, boats and campers. Again, 15 is gravel, so you can see we're having feedback on this. Granny flats are, and this is really more of a comment on the bucket list, but granny flats, we don't really need to change anything like that on that. 17 is a letter that we got in this comment period about townhomes. There's not really anything we need to do with that one. Question what I should tell the council member. 18, again, is granny flats. 19 is more about the bucket list and priorities that we have on it, but the code doesn't need to be changed based on that. Number 20 is an individual property owner who has asked to be zoned, what our current zone is B, he's currently in our current zoning district, B6, and he would like to go to B3. This is the Blackwell Realty, the neighboring property just got zoned to be B3. I am reflecting that change on the map. I had a conversation with Joe about that, as being appropriate, it doesn't have to stay that way, but it does make sense, and we're going to get the, the next item actually ties into this a little bit too. The next item is not in this packet that you have in front of you on a staple together, it's a separate stapled item in the packet. And this is the comment, B6 is going to OP. And the way it's written right now, some of the protections that B6 have. B6 is a commercial neighborhood type office zoning that's meant really for Main Street. That's how it was designed, we didn't have a historic preservation at the time, so it was meant to be a protection for some of the houses on Main Street that were going commercial in the office. The Historic Preservation Commission has asked that we retain those protections. That gets a little bit more complicated, and I could just throw into this, but that's something that we have these consultants work on, have to wear this to make that work. But essentially, we're just trying to keep the status quo, the protection of the B6. Now, number 20 on Levalle Pike is Zone B6, which is a zoning district toward Main Street. Clearly, that's not Main Street, and that's one of the reasons why I'm throwing it in as a possibility that a way to solve that issue would be to make it a B3. Or in the new code, it could be a CS, Commercial Service Area, Constitutable Office Professional. I don't know if that made any sense, I hope it did, but I'm going to review the councilman award, so anyway.
What area are you talking about, B6, like down there from the high school? What did you get, the little football?
No, B6 is just on Main Street, mostly it's on Main Street. It's got, if you look through this document that I gave you, there's about seven pages going over restrictions on demolition, and how you build, and what the reviews are. It's really an attempt to have some sort of historic preservation without the historic preservation district being there.
It's not transitioned? Ah, they said?
Yeah, it's transitional, it's summer. So, anyway, kind of like this down here.
Like bland.
Which one's giving sample of? Yeah, the last one, we re-zoned on Main Street, it's, you know, it's where the, there's the Sonic and then the shopping, next to the Sonic, and then there's a checking and cashing. Right across the street from that checking and cash, there's a house that we just re-zoned not too long ago, and that's a B6. And that was just to give them the option of using it for.
The same size.
Yeah, for a practical house.
Okay, yeah.
So that's now a B6. If you skip one house, then there's a couple more B6s right down from that. They're really meant, it's really meant to have offices on Main Street, in historic buildings, close to residential. I mean, it's really.
It's bland, it's bland.
Yeah, and you have a demolition factor, what Toddian did, right. So that's what the B6 is, and most of the properties are right there. There are three exceptions to that with the B6. There is the Blackwell Realty Office on Levalle Pike that we've talked about. On Noah Courts, come off the bypass and keep going south, Noah Courts, right over there, there's a hair cuttery school over there, that is B6. And then we just re-zoned a piece of property on Castle Heights North and Colesberry to B6. Those three do not fit the normal B6 zoning district. And we have added the COs. One thing that would be appropriate, I have not reflected on this map, because I thought that'd be a little bit presumptuous, is to change, we don't have anything that says CEO, Commercial Office Zoning District. It's a new district that we created for office use, commercial office use. Something that we've heard that we need, but we don't have. Those, the Colesberry, Castle Heights property, and the Noah Court would be good candidates to just be the first ones, because they're office uses, but they're not, they're not really in the traditional B6 historic areas. So, does that make sense?
The cops are still in the house.
Yeah, because they're not houses, they're new development, there's no point in having them come to the planning commission and see if you demolished them, you know, they're just outside of the Main Street corridor. Anyway, and that's not reflected on here, right now they're going to the OP, we can change it to CO if we want. But the Blackwell property, they've asked to be B3 or new CS. This is getting complicated. I just want to stop a few years earlier. Yeah. Okay. Item 22 is a comment, doesn't need to change anything. 23 is again the B6 and retain the protections for that. 24, it was pointed out that the colors on CG and CS districts weren't distinguishable. We have fixed that, everything that's B5 and B4 right now, we're going to CG, everything that is B3 is going to CS. So that's fixed on this version of the. And then 25, we do have that in our packet here. These are just typos that we highlighted, they need to be fixed in the Historic Preservation Section.
Hammer.
Yeah, just fixing those things. 26, mostly what's going on there, and I actually left it out, but it's, I've got it. I tend to leave it out. It's, there's a table that we have that has the, the commercial neighborhood listed as neighborhood commercial, so I'm switching that back, and the downtown commercial and commercial, and switch. So every commercial district should start with a C, so we know the commercial, and then have the rest of the name after that. I have, we have actually switched college/university to university/campus so that the C would not be at the front of the, if you're confused, go to commercial district, anyway. And then 27, the request that RM6 be, the height limit on that may need to go on the bucket list. The request immediately was to take the 35-foot requirement out, leaving the three foot, the three story for now, and that can be looked at at a separate point. And that's the main reason for that, instead of requiring somebody that does the flat roof, what they could do and still do again.
And then didn't, I'm changing, didn't you talk about maybe creating later a zoning that were kind of near Hamilton Station, and says, okay, somebody wants to come in and do another development, you've already worked out the kinks, you've got everything set up, and then you could, and would be zoned to meet the same requirements as that project?
Right, yeah, I think we've got a development that seems to be popular with the looks and the feel of it. It would, you know, it would make sense to kind of still those requirements from the ESP and create a separate zoning district, or possibility so that people could use those standards to see that they're working just fine, with no real reason not to allow them to go to other places, which is just the ESP district.
And that would be a bucket list item?
That is a bucket list item. I'd call that the trend with the land today and the traditional neighborhood.
Gotcha.
You know, that's where those falls, that falls in there. Any questions on that? Rush through the classes, okay? Just like to say thank you to all the people that have been involved in helping us get to this point. It was kind of stagnant for a few years, but you picked up the ball and led down there. Thank you very much, and everybody involved, all.